At this time, I'll call the August 10th, 2017 meeting to order for the Dixon County Commission meeting. And would you please all stand and join in the flex loop?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda, we have a couple of things that we're going to add to the agenda. At the end of the meeting, we have an executive session for attorney-client privilege, and that will take about 10 minutes. And so, we'll be adding that on to the agenda. And then also, to consider the approval of a revised CAB agreement.
Might make a note that that will be after our executive session.
The CAB agreement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I go ahead and move that we approve the amended agenda.
Seconded.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our consent agenda includes the minutes of August 3rd work session, the regular meeting. It also includes the minutes of August 7th canvas. Includes payroll, $258,280.74. Fund expenditures of $286,402.89. And then APAC shares, we have a payment of $481,221.65.
Let me re- re- consent agenda.
I'll second it. We have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a few papers to sign. Brad, if you want to get those going. And these are on the consent agenda that we just approved, that we're signing approval on that. While we're doing that, we'll have commissioner comments and committee reports. Craig, would you want to start us off on that, please?
Yeah, last Monday, I met with a citizen out in Craig River Township, issue with rain road between 32 and 3400 Avenue. I talked to John and Brad both about the issues. One of them is undercutting the road, and the other is trees are blocking view. We'll have an EDC meeting tonight at 5:30. We'll have that over at the Abilene Commission Center. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay, thank you. Laverne?
Yeah, I'll have my juvenile detention meeting over at Junction next Wednesday. And like I say, I did attune some of the fair. It was really, the weather was very cooperative this year, and so, it was a good turnout of people that got to take part in the fair. That's all I have.
Earlier this morning, on our work session, we met with department heads and just received updates on what some of the department heads are doing, some of the issues that they are facing, and had a report from EMS on their activity, and then, of course, heard good reports on the fair and the pleasant weather we've been having. I think certainly kind of helped things. It's always an exciting time around fair time regardless. I have a central Kansas mental health board meeting, and I'm one of the board members representing Dixon County, and that's going to be coming up. And then also, plan on participating in some activities over at Fort Riley. And they have the Victory Week that they refer to it as, and they've moved it because it is the 100th anniversary for Fort Riley. And they have a lot of events there, and I think maybe some have noticed as you go down Buckeye, there were people that are putting up welcome home signs and so on, and we certainly appreciate the military service, but also, keep in mind that we have many of those people that have chosen to live here in Dixon County. And so, that's a time we're going to show some special appreciation for Fort Riley. That's all I have. Are there any other committee reports? At this time, we'll go to presentation of petitions and proclamations or public comments. We do not have any petitions or proclamations. Judging from the crowd, I am assuming that there's probably some comments that want to be made from the public. We certainly welcome that, and we have that at every meeting available. If it is something that is not on the agenda, you know, if it's on the agenda, we'll wait till then to hear your comment, but anything that is not on the agenda, if you, you know, please step forward or give your name, your address, and if there is a representee of the group, you know, we don't necessarily want to hear the same thing a dozen times, but on a new subject, but if there's a representative, we're glad to hear from you, so.
Question I have is, I've been hearing, and everything I read is we're going to spend no more than $15.9 million on the new justice center. I also read that we have $1.8 million invested in our fund already for a building fund. So if it's going to cost us no more than $15.9, why do we not just finance 14.1 and use that $1.8 as a down payment? That's what it's for.
And I know, just for sake of the press, would you want to go ahead and state your name and address?
Bob Arndt, 605 April.
Yes, come on in, got someone, and maybe before you leave, we'll have you sign in, or Bob, do you want to let him sign in real quick here now?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Thank you, sir.
And Bob, I don't want to, it's $1.4 million.
$1.4 million?
Yeah.
Then why don't we finance 14.5?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, you know, that's okay.
Because they've been talking about the $1.1 plus the $700,000 that's going to come out of the general budget next year because the road payments are done.
We had two mills that we set aside for this, and so, that's been some of the accumulation that has taken place. And some of the purpose, often you hear people make the comment, well, if you know something's coming towards you, you know, why don't you start saving or setting aside some money for that? So that's a little bit what we've done on that.
And then why can't we use it as a down payment on the building?
We could. Well, we could have that option. I don't know that we've made that decision whether that should help with any of the payments early on, or...
Then what would you do with it if you don't?
It would still be there in place. Well, but, I mean, I, you know, it, do you think we should spend 100% of that money for a down payment?
That's what it's for. And why finance it if we don't need to? I mean, that's why you started collecting the two mills, was to collect the building fund. So we've got it, and you're talking about interest rates, and the less we have to finance, less our payments are going to be, so why don't we just use it?
And I, the, I don't want to speak out of turn here, the 14 point, $15.9 that were, the coins, you see them on the ballot, Bob, you know, we're asking for that money. If we don't need to spend it, we're not going to spend it.
Right, right, we're not going to spend it, right.
Right.
Well, we won't go that high, but I'm saying whatever we do end up...
It'll be just that money, less money we'll have to borrow.
Yeah, then why not put that $1.5 down on there and borrow less?
Because we don't want to borrow less than what we may need, because we don't want to have to come back and get another second bite of the apple. Because once we go for it, that makes sense? I mean, I didn't see it doesn't.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't. What it's saying is that we can borrow $15.9, and then if we need to, we can spend the other million and a half. So it's not $15.9 anymore, then it's $17.4.
I, I don't agree with your thinking there.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not going to spend money that I don't need to spend, Bob.
Right, right. So that's what I'm saying, why not use that million and a half as a down payment?
And we probably will.
Okay, then we would not have to finance $15.9.
No.
That's my question.
Yeah, and I've, I've had some others bring that up, and you offer their suggestion or opinion on it, on how we should handle that particular part of it. And it's not anything that, you know, we've been very open as far as we do have that money there for that specific purpose.
Right.
And the hope that we have is that if the voting would be successful, that we could proceed with the project, that we could get some bids that would, you know, come under that particular amount. But you do have to set your funding authority at a certain amount, and...
That's right.
So that's kind of the, and you've been through the drill before, I mean, you've been aware of other public projects.
Well, I have, I have, but if you're going to set it at $15.9, then that, you know, set it at $15.9, use the one and a half. I mean, that's 14.4, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah, just, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name's James Stout, from Abilene, 600 Cottage. I'd like to talk about, is this two mills supposed to pay for this whole project over the period of the, what is it, 30 years?
7400.
74.
Yes, well, that was the purpose of that, and...
Of the two mills?
And what the goal is, is that would be enough to service the payments.
Okay, well, I kind of feel the public's kind of in the dark here. You know, you're going to have to have more maintenance people, you're going to have, is the utilities on this building $80,000 a year? I heard that, I don't know what it is, but you're going to more than double the size of this building. Where is the money for utilities going to come from? I mean, I really think it ought to be printed that, yes, there's going to have to be mill levy increases, just to pay for the maintenance of it once it's done. You understand what I'm saying? Utilities or...
Let me...
Insurance?
You know, I mean, everything in the paper has kind of been for this, and, well, this is like the elevator. I've been around a long time, and we get a printout in the front page of the paper that this elevator can't be fixed. Well, there isn't anything that was ever built 50 years ago that can't be copied today. There are manufacturers out there that can rebuild motors or whatever.
And we had someone come up and look at it, and the actual parts weren't available where you could just go in, but yes, you can have...
But then can be re...
You can have things made and repurposed and retrofitted and so on.
But, you know, the article said the shaft wasn't big enough, the elevator shaft wasn't big enough, you know, I just think they're, the people's being misrepresented.
Shaft isn't the right size to put a new elevator, the standards they got now. That's what that was. We couldn't repurpose a shaft if we had to put a new elevator in it, if it was unrepairable. Does that make sense?
But the motor can be rebuilt.
Well, but it, and it's, you know, it's not the motors, it's the relays and switches that we have problems with.
Well, I mean, it was manufactured once, it can be copied again.
But the biggest thing is our, the diagrams we had were old enough that they had to take them down and magnify them to be able to see what it was. And it's, anything can be manufactured, but how much money do you want to put in there before you have to replace it?
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Part of our maintenance issue.
Part of our agenda today is, we are going to get it. For $3,800, we're going to get it fixed. They got it temporary fixed right now, is that correct? But in order to fix what needs to be done right now is going to cost us $3,800. And I guess, my problem with, when you start talking about how much more it's going to cost us with this new addition, well, it's costing us, I see bills every week of plumbing problems, electrical, whatever. I'm saying we spend $50,000 a year easily just doing those type of maintenance problems. Well, if we, if we go through here and renovate, put new piping in, new heating and cooling, we won't be spending that $50,000 a year. So if you could apply that $50,000 to some of these things that you say are going to cost us more, realistically...
Well, yes, sir, but this building was built 50 years ago, and that was already, that's figured into every budget, maintenance money. Why wasn't these things taken care of over the years? Or why didn't the money build up to where you got a million dollars?
Well, because...
Where did the money go?
Because everybody wants their mill levy low, so we don't budget for those type of things.
You don't budget maintenance on this building?
But we don't budget extra money. Now, we're going to budget extra money because, and when you, when you, when you talk about plumbing and heating issues, when you talk about renovating, you can't just do one room at a time. I mean, this is going to be a major problem, a project throughout the building. Ceilings will be tore out so that you can get to this plumbing, put new piping in, and, you know, it's not something, you say, you know, you can put it off for a while and say, well, we're going to keep patching stuff, which is what we've done. But when you get to a point where you say, you know, this is costing us too much to keep doing this, it needs to be fixed right. So, you know, and we're at the point where it needs to be fixed right.
But, but I really feel it ought to be printed that, yes, there's going to have to be increases in the mill levy in order to staff this place or pay the utilities. I mean, you got to take that, I mean, why shouldn't the taxpayers be aware of that too? I mean, or, or like the $3,500 to fix the motor? Why, you know, why isn't that on the front page of the paper saying, yeah, we, we are getting it fixed, it's going to be fixed? So you're kind of leading the people to think that this elevator shaft isn't big enough, and we've just got to have this addition. It's misleading, is what I'm saying.
Well, yeah, I might step in here a little bit, and I appreciate your comment, but kind of just to, for an orderly way, I know Ron's up here at the podium, and so, I think we'll...
Go ahead, Mr. Jeff.
Okay, but if you'd want to come back to the podium, I think that's the, so we just don't get the back and forth. And I realize you do want follow-up questions or comments, and, but, okay.
I'm that one.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Ron Barberi, 664, 2700 Avenue, Abilene, Kansas. The question I have, but I'd like to just follow up just with a little bit of what he was talking about. I guess, as a taxpayer, I don't understand the articles I see where the windows are, first of all, we started off with windows that can't be fixable. Now, we're heating, air, plumbing, and don't we maintain this thing like we do our residents or something? I mean, we can't just let the stuff go 30, 40 years and say we got to just redo it all. That's my opinion, and that's a lot of what I hear on the street. I mean, we're, the plumbing shop, the sewer stinks, you know, just on and on. I read how bad a shape this thing is in. Why wasn't some of this done as we go? And maybe that's along the lines of what he's talking about, you know?
Brad, do you want to answer some of that, or any of us could jump in?
First of all, on the $3,800 for the elevator repair, that's on the list to report to them today. We ended up to that part of the meeting, and that was, they aren't aware of that until I just told them in the work session, so if the paper elects to print that on the front page and papers, she's sitting there, that's her choice, so, I don't... On, you know, I've heard the comments that we have failed to maintain the building. It's 61 years old, not 50 years old. 12 years makes a big difference. We maintain constantly on the building. As they've said, we commented, I don't know how many dozens and dozens of times you hear at meetings, if you, if you want to know how much this building's maintained, ask any of the plumbers in the community, because they're in here weekly. A lot of the problem is, has to do with the fact that the plumbing is built into the walls, and the window, the register of deeds officer's, very good example of how we had to tear the wall out to get to a sewer line that was deteriorated. Now, we can, we did that after a year and a half of searching for it with about four different plumbers, and finally, Denny's Plumbing's the one that traced it down into that area where three of us had given up on it and walked away from it, said, we can't find the problem. Then he's found that problem and told us that you've got major issues throughout the building, your plumbing is deteriorated. It's, it's old, and especially the sewer lines, the sewer gas has, has eroded the pipes. So we have been fighting that, and fighting that, and fighting that. Really, the only option they're telling us that we have is just to hear the little problems, to go in and, as Lynn said, take the, take the plumbing out, start from scratch, and replace it, much like a person would do in their home if they needed to keep that up. How many times have we seen a home that has to be rewired or replumbed or something because of its age? It's no different here. We have not failed to maintain anything. The windows are 61 years old, they're single-pane glass. You just, it's, we've looked several times with this commission and the previous commissions to replace those, and it's going to take about, if I remember right, the numbers were like a half million to three quarters of a million dollars to replace all the windows. We didn't have that money at that time. We looked at grants, there were some grants available, energy grants, but you had to invest it, and then you get the money recuperated or repaid over a period of time in your savings. We knew that at some point, we were going to have to do some renovation here, and they elected at that time, that was a previous commission, to wait and do it all at one time. So it's not like...
My question, though, we have various times that we have grants available?
There are no grants available now, Ron.
In the past, though, there wasn't either, except for that?
There weren't available to do that. There was one energy grant that it could have qualified for, but you have to pay for it, and then over a period of 10 or 20 years, they would let you get some credit back on the savings in the utility bills. So, but there, we've looked for grants now. If you've been involved in grant programs at all for various reasons, the federal grants for things like that have dried up four, five, six years ago. Federal government doesn't have the money to do it, state, state doesn't have the money, obviously, so there are no grants available, so. Does that answer most of the question, I think?
I think so.
Go ahead.
Well, what I, my, my point was, what I was a little vague on, we started out with, I think we've already covered the $15.9, but we started out at $17.7, and then it came out later, we got, we reduced the cost, and we're going to hold it at $15.9.
Nine.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess the question I, was a little fuzzy to me. When we were at $17.7, I saw where we were going to be at $850,000 a year to retire the debt, to service the loan or the bond. But then, I think Brad, in, golly, I think it was May 26th article, you had said, by going, by cutting this down and holding it at $15.9, we were going to be able to save $100,000 a year. And so, I thought that was, but it's still talking $850,000 a year now, and I just assumed that meant $750,000 a year.
Let me answer that.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
The overall...
I mean, I got the article here.
Sure, the overall project is $17.7 million. That is for everything that was proposed, including all the basement renovations and everything in the new portion. The contractor and the architect came back and said, we can parse this down and put some options in there, so if the bids don't come in as good as we suspect they will, we can, we can piecemeal out some of the, remove some of the basement and knock that down to get it to where we, it would be less. The total project is still $17.7. We have, we'll have $1.4 million on hand January 1. The intent has been to take that off the top, we don't want to finance money that we already have on hand. We have some other money available that we could use from the KNOT fund through the tune of several hundred thousand.
Are you, are you saying it's could cost $17.7 and still?
That's what, if we do, if we were to do the whole thing as it was planned, that's what the project, the project still is. But by taking the $1.4 million off, because we don't want to finance that, like Bob said, and a couple hundred thousand other, or 400,000 other, that brings out what we would finance at $15.9. Now, if the bids come in higher than we anticipate, we can remove the finished work of the basement under the jail and do the project for $15.9, or whatever that lower number is. So it's providing us some flexibility in case the bid, we don't know where the bids will come in. That's, that's very...
Well, but I mean, I think, I think the public, Brad, is understanding it's going to be locked at $15.9.
The financing, the bonds are locked at $15.9.
That's your budget, the budget authority, so it cannot exceed that amount, but, but if, for example, it would come in less, I mean, that's really what we hope for.
Which usually it doesn't, but...
Well, on some projects, it, I mean, it does. The one thing you want to avoid is, you know, say if you put it at $15,500,000, and then it comes in at $15,600,000, you know, you've exceeded the budget authority, so you actually, you try to put a little bit of a buffer in there, but, you know, right now, there also is opportunity for very competitive bidding, and, you know, you depend on the contractor being very much aware of that, and so, so that, that could make a difference.
So there's million...
Recently, when it started out at that $17 million, and from the response and listening to the public, because, I mean, we do listen, and we try to respond, but we also have identified that we have some problems and deficiencies here that we have to address. So we just can't push them back and pretend they aren't there, and, and so, we look for ways to try to reduce that from that $17 million down to the $15.9. And that's what Brad was moving to.
But, I mean, I think we've left it at $15.9, as far as everybody's informed, or am I missing something?
No, no, that's where we're at. But there were, but a long time, a while back, there was that $17 million number out there. But when we actually got it, you know, honed down to the best we could, that's where we came with that $15.9.
So then, what, what the article said, we really wouldn't reduce it $100,000 by doing the $15.9. It's still $850,000, is that right? Or is that correct? Eight hundred?
By knocking that money off of the top, that difference would reduce that payment by $100,000, I think is what, what it was saying, so.
So you're saying that, when it was $17.7, it was $950?
It was closer to $1 million a year at that point, yeah. And by knocking that down, while we're borrowing the $15.9, the payment on that over 34 years would be this at $850.
I didn't, I, I missed that part, I mean, I didn't see that.
And of course, that's dependent on where the interest rates are at the time, you know, when we actually do it, if they're 3.6 or 3.7, I mean, just, I've got a few basis points to make a difference, so.
I think that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Reginald Tittle, 2444 Jeep Road. Have any consideration been taken into, like, excavation of the project for core drilling, and what the cost of the moving of the current utilities that are buried underground and overhead, and those kind of options? What's this going to do for our taxes on the mill levy for people that are on fixed incomes? I'm on, I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, you know, and it's just getting to the point where the taxes are killing us. What's going to happen, what's it going to raise our taxes per person, per capita, per year? I'm talking anywhere from one week old to 100 years. Does anybody have any answers for that?
Well, no. Reginald, the way we've got it set up, the finance, it's, you know, we've got two mills. We have some revenue coming in from the, which was, was mentioned earlier, about a road payment that we're no longer going to be making. It's going to be about $450,000 bucks a year, and Keystone Pipeline will be coming on the tax rule in 2021. So that's...
That's four years.
Well, by the time we get it financed, that's, well, it'll be coming in 20, the beginning of 2021.
Mm-hmm.
So...
But, you know, my, my basic question is, what's it going to do per capita?
Give me how much they're going to raise it?
Right, per person, per year, approximately.
Shouldn't raise it any.
I don't see how it can when you spend $15.9 million.
It's not, and it's, I'm going to use the deal that we're going to have extra revenue coming in, extra assess valuations coming off these pipeline, and then what we're spending right now on the road, that we won't be spending in the future.
Now, I've got, I've got something else here that I think Roland and I talked about When, we have a lot of military that live in Abilene and in Dickinson County, and when they come in to vote on certain things, why can't we make it a standardized rule that if you do not own or possess property, I'm not talking personal property in Dickinson County, where you own real estate, why cannot we restrict it to just those people?
State can, unless I take care of that in the legislature.
Can that be brought up by one of our commissioners?
It would, it won't happen, because...
I realize that, but can it be addressed?
Well, you can ask the question, Reginald, but it's not going to happen.
Well, yeah. Okay, well, I guess that's...
I mean, I'm not trying to be short about it, but...
Oh, no, no, I understand, Craig.
I mean, it's kind of like, you can rent property... I mean, it's kinda like, you can rent property, and you can vote even if you don't own property. Or you own property in Gary County, and you own more there, and you're not gonna get to vote on a, a mill levy over there.
True.
So, I mean, it's one person, one vote, and it's where you live.
I understand that, but, you know, I still think it's something that should be addressed.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't do it at our, we can't do it at our level.
I understand, you know, but there are people that we can contact that, that can address, and possibly John Barker.
Yep, mhm, that'd be the one, and, and Representative, or Senator Harding.
Right. Um, you know, and back to my point of have core drill, drilling been done back here to find out what we've got as far as what anything underground is? Um, I can respond to one thing. It costs my kids to have a gas line moved twenty feet, twenty-five hundred dollars. You're talking, the line is one inch. It costs them twenty-five hundred dollars to have it moved twenty-five feet.
Brad, when did we have the meeting with all the contractors, utilities?
All the utilities, we're in, it's been a year ago now.
Year ago, yeah.
And, uh, had a meeting with all the utilities to talk about just exactly that. And they gave the architect estimates of what it would take to provide utilities in a manner that would suit the, the changes. Geology has not been done yet. We have the bids, and we have the bids for it, and we've held off on it until we see what happens with it.
But, you know, as you're now saying, that when I talked to Kansas Gas and Westar about moving the kids' utilities, the initial cost of what they had projected to move that gas line twenty-five feet was fifteen hundred dollars. Here we go, it ended up twenty-five hundred. So if you take that on a massive amount, what's that gonna do to the cost of, of the building? Goes right on up. My, my experience of being a contractor, and I'm retired now, but my experience of being a contractor, once you open the hole up and get the footings in, the price starts going up.
And that's what you have a contingency for. You hope you don't have those.
What kind of contingency have we got? Ten percent, twenty percent?
Ten percent contingency built into this project, yeah.
Okay. Well, those are just some of the things, you know, from my past experience of doing building and excavation and everything else, um, that I went to address, so...
And one point you bring up, um, that, that I might just carry a little bit further. When you talk about that small line, just moving that line, you know, sometimes a smaller project of scale, you start running into that. And that's one of the problems we run into here, that if we do it piecemeal and say, "Let's just do a certain amount to this building this year, and then next year we'll do some, and next year, and so on," you know, it's, uh...
But we're talking about a, a four-inch gas line that runs right down the street back here.
But the scale, the scale of doing a major project, sometimes that helps you as far as some of the cost containment's.
I guess that's all I've got to say, so I've got a doctorate in it.
Okay, well, thank you.
I thought, oh, go ahead, Ron. I was just gonna take a second. Go ahead. My name's Roland Coates, twenty-eight twenty-six Jeep Road, Abilene. Is there any asbestos in, in this building that has to be taken out? Do you know?
Yes.
There it is. You know about how much?
It's not viable.
Pardon me?
It's not viable.
Okay. The other issue I got is, I wanted to ask you about the bond issue. When Chapman done their school up there, as I remember, the bonds go up fifty percent over the time of the, of the, um, of the loan. Is that the same way these work, or are these different?
Depends on your interest rate.
I'm talking about the bonds go up fifty percent.
Yeah, explain that. I'm not sure what I mean there.
Well, I assume they done them that way, and this is total assumption.
Right, I, I don't-
Okay. I assume they done it that way, because it used to be, the valuation, everything was rising.
Okay.
That's not happening anymore. Not, not this time.
I see what you're, when you extend them out, what the bond price will be in thirty-four years?
Right.
Okay.
So what's that bond price gonna be? Is this one doing the same thing, or are we on a level?
It's on a fixed-
Should be a fixed rate.
It's on a fixed, so it, it won't be going up until it's settled. It's the same for forty years.
Okay. And I didn't know that till we had that issue over there.
Their geo-bonds, and they're, they're fixed for life, but not-
Yeah. Next question I have, who paid for the signs and the papers on the windshields?
It was not the county. It's on the county. It was not county.
It was not the county?
Yeah, but I know, I probably get to tell you, you made those donations, so...
I, I understand, but the county did not pay for any of that?
It's not private funding, is what you're saying, Brad.
All right. That's all my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you drop something you didn't get picked up, or?
No, he's, no.
There's still a paper on the floor up here.
Where at?
Oh, it's right behind that chair, right in front of the-
Yeah, I just, I just have a quick clarification. In other words, then, you're gonna spend the fif- fifteen-nine, lost the one that you got back, and you're gonna end up spending the original seventeen-seven. Is that correct?
I have time to repeat that, but it's not-
Okay. You're gonna spend the fifteen-nine that we're gonna bond, plus the holdback that we've got that we've accumulated.
We could spend it. We don't, we're not wanting, we're not wanting to.
Okay. And it could end up to be, like you said, you didn't cut anything, it could end up to be seventeen-seven.
It could. It depends on how the bids come in, on what portion of that.
Okay. And I, yeah, I think that that, uh, cutting it to fifteen-nine, I think in the paper was totally misleading. Because I had people come up to me and say, uh, "Well, if we didn't get anything else done, at least we saved a couple million dollars." And then I talked to you, and you, and you said, "No, it's not gonna cost more than fifteen-nine." And then you told me about the one point eight that you were holding back. And I said, "Hey, that's not what they're doing. They're still gonna spend seventeen-seven." And that's what I wanna help you open.
Good, Ben, good.
Yeah, good, but you didn't really cut that project.
I, I wouldn't support spending seventeen million.
Well, you just say you got fifteen-nine plus the rest of it.
Well, but the fifteen-nine, I mean, that's, I think that's where you have to hold their feet, their feet to the fire and say, "This is where we're at." We've gotta figure out a way to come out below that. And I'm still holding out. I may be too optimistic, but I'm holding out, hope that if it gets to that point, that it would be below fifteen point nine.
Could be used as a down payment on a fifteen-nine.
One point four.
One point four.
It could be used as a down payment, or it could be used as service part of that debt, but, but I think it, it's well taken. Now, the thing to keep in mind, too, is the interest rates are extremely low right now and on a fixed rate. Um, and, and Craig has already mentioned the pipeline coming on. In our meeting just earlier, we've had five building permits issued for residential. Those, those are totaling over a million dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollar average on some houses that are being built right now. You have Loves is getting ready to have a ground break, and that's gonna add a tremendous amount of value. There's also a few people that have their taxes abated where that's gonna be coming off. So from the valuation standpoint, if there's more money through the valuation, that's, that's what's gonna keep the mill levy, where we wanna keep that level. And that's, you know, I mean, that, that's what I'm looking at, just from a business perspective.
I'd like to say the pipeline, the state screwed that up the first time, and they're thoroughly capable of screwing that up again. So I would count on that money-
We're watching them.
I would count on that money, too, if they're adding it in your bank and you check it.
And that's a point well taken, yes. Bird in the hand is important.
I got one more question. I guess my feeling is on this thing, I don't quite understand why we need almost double the amount of courthouse as, as to what we got now. I mean, I see courthouses all over the place, and I get around a little bit, too. Took pictures of some in Texas that are disordered from a hundred years ago. And I understand things change. But we just spent ten thousand, or ten million, excuse me, I can't even say the right figure, one million dollars in this jail ten years ago. And all of a sudden, we're just obsolete. I don't quite understand that. Why do we have to go out and build double the amount of building? And, and I watched the school do this, and they got, uh, fifty, fifty less kids per class than when I went there. And the, and the school's an acre bigger. I'm talking about just the high school is an acre bigger than when I went there. There's a cost factor in keeping these things up along with just building them. And, and I'm talking about, no, part of that's already been brought up, but just the maintenance of building. And I'm talking about re-roof or whatever, when a hailstorm comes or whatever happens. My question is, we're gonna have double the amount of space we had before in the ballpark.
A little more.
To get exact on it.
A little more.
Can we justify the cost of what we're doing? Because I'm having a hard time getting that through my head.
Let me address that, son. You brought up, brought up the renovation of, of the jail, and that was before any of us was on the commission.
I understand that.
But the problem with that jail is, there's nothing you could do. And, and at the time, they, they tried to make some improvements in it, but it really did not solve the problem. And, and looking at that jail now, there's, there's no way to expand it. There's no way to correct the situation that, that are the problems up there without just building a new jail. So, you know, there's rules and regulations on, on these buildings that, when you start building, and jails is one of them, that do have a lot of regulations on size. How many square feet you have to have for each prisoner and all that. So, you know, part of that is not our choice. We have to do it according to the regulations. And the Abilene Police Department upstairs, see, part of that area, they're gonna be funding eight hundred, eight fifty, somewhere, eight hundred and fifty thousand, maybe. We talk, you, you know, so they will be funding that much of the upstairs renovation for our part.
For a whole.
They have no choice, because they're gonna be, they're gonna be paying on their part of this bond, so they're gonna be-
For how many years?
Whatever they decide they wanna pay it off at.
So we don't have anything there to know how long they're gonna be upstairs?
Well, they're not gonna pay it off in twenty, for less than twenty years, so...
You, you don't know if they're gonna be there five years, is that correct?
They're gonna be paying on their part of the renovation.
Practically, they'll, they'll be involved, and then-
They're gonna have to pay regardless whether they're or not, because they're gonna be paying on their, whatever that figure is of renovation. So, you, you know...
Well, there's just an article in the paper, the interim city manager said that this was a good deal. We should move in here because it's cheap, and then in the meantime, we should start accumulating money so we can build our own jail. I didn't like that article at all.
I don't think he's, did he say that?
Yes, he did. It's in the newspaper.
I was thinking it was the fire department that didn't want it done.
Nope, nope, nope. That's the jail. It's in the newspaper.
It, it might have.
I, I don't know.
Might have been a misunderstanding, but I-
Okay, good. I'll have to go back, and, but it's, it's in the last two weeks. It's not that long ago that that was, that was in our paper.
They have no intention of, of pulling, if they get committed and they're paying on their bond part, I mean, there's, why would they pay on a bond and then move out?
I don't know, but, well, it'd be like pay the rent and then move out and leave it stuck.
Yeah. Procedurally, I mean, they'd come to a county jail once they're arrested.
As long as things are written up that way, Laverne, I don't have a problem with it. The problem I have is when we're not straight with people.
Well, we have been, but there's been a lot of miscommunication.
There's things, there's things you know that can hit, and I don't wanna go into that. But I'm just saying there's been things hit here, and we know that. There isn't anybody in this room that doesn't know that.
I don't know. No, what, what have we hit?
Well, there was a lot of things that I didn't, the end around about putting this, this courthouse into whatever you call this thing, a wholly, a wholly thing.
Public Building Commission, there's, there's been a lot of confusion about that.
You just dropped something?
A lot of confusion about that.
And, and I guess what I'm saying is, it, I, I haven't felt like it's been on this in Fort Worth. I just haven't, Laverne, and that's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I appreciate you guys listening to this, this morning. I really do. And, yeah.
I think we've been over backwards to try to pub, publicize everything that we were doing. And, and, you know, we've had people come up to us yet and tell us they don't know what this election's about. It's been in, the paper for the last, I mean, I, I, we started talking about this when I came on the board seven years ago, that we were gonna have to do something different with, with this facility, update it, and, and the, and the jail.
The unfortunate thing, Laverne, is that nobody takes Abilene paper.
Well, but we've, we've gone to, we've put on meetings that-
Brad, why don't you jump in?
How many meetings have we put on? I mean-
We've done to date, I think, thirty-four public hours. Every one of our meetings, these meetings, is recorded on our website for the last twelve years. Most of the people in here, I haven't seen in any of those meetings. We've been to every city group and every senior center and every public organization that we can go to, talking about it, trying to make people aware of it. And I've had a number of people tell me, "Well, we don't take the Abilene paper." The Abilene paper is the official notification of the county. And so that's, I mean, that, we, we've got a number of different avenues and venues that has been put out. So I, I, too, take exception to the fact there's been anything made, and I'd like to know what it is, because I-
I can tell you what it is, fifteen-nine, seven point seven, that's what it is. I've been trying to get that out for a month now, and it just, and today's the first time you really come close to giving me the answer.
That's the same answer I gave you a month ago in my office.
I know it, I know it, but nobody will believe-
Let's go back to, to the podium if you're gonna speak.
No, we're, I'm done, I'm done. No, I'm done. I got my voice.
One of, one of the things, before you jump in, Ron, that I just want to mention, too, and I, I appreciate hearing these comments. And I mean, I, and I've heard people, they've stopped me at coffee shops, and I've had people call me. Um, you know, one of the things we're focused on right now is, is this, with the group discussion today, is this is what the cost is gonna be, and so on. When this all started, we, you might say we had a problem to solve and identify. And, you know, that's what's brought us here. Because if this is voted down, you know, then where do you go from here? The, the problems still don't go away. We still have the building not being efficient and functional in some areas. The elevator shaft, for example, we can't put in a new elevator with that. You know, the jail is undersized. We've got the problems with the courtroom. So, you know, what's brought us here is, is how are we gonna solve this problem? And I think we have to be careful that we don't say, "Well, the answer is, let's just push it away" or shove it under the rug, 'cause the problem's still there. And, and I know all of you are concerned about finances, and, you know, I have commercial property, which gets taxed pretty high. I've got residential property. You all have residential, some commercial farm properties. I mean, I had someone call me up, and they said, you know, we, they gave a pretty large number of what they pay on property tax. And, and, you know, and that's something we are, we strive to keep that mill levy, rein it in and keep it under control. And, um, you know, I, I mean, I hope we're on the same page, you know, on some of these issues. I mean, I know we're talking about some of our differences or questions we have, but, you know, I, I'd like to think we have a lot of common ideas to try to solve the problem, and what's gonna be best for the county without creating a financial hardship, not only for ourselves, but for the generations to come, so... Anyway, I'm just gonna kinda put that in there.
Could I piggyback a little on that? You, you know, the problem's not gonna go away, so some point in time, it will be dealt with. And I guess my problem is, if it's put off, I probably won't be sitting here, it'd be somebody else, but if it's put off, and then this project comes back, and all at once it's a twenty or twenty-five million dollar project, I'm gonna be very upset. Because, you know, we're looking at an opportunity here to, to do it now. And, and you put it off, and then as a taxpayer, I ended up paying for a twenty or twenty-five million dollar project. I'm not gonna be very happy. And, you know, if you say that it doesn't have to be done at all, ever, that's just not being realistic.
Let me tell you, Ron, go ahead and step in.
Back to what Ben said, that's why I'm here, because of the commercial and the farm and everything, the taxes are high enough, I feel. But my point is, while the press is here, I just think it should be clarified that we're really not fifteen-nine. I mean, we could be seventeen-seven, and I don't think that's disclosed. You were saying everything's fully upfront? Uh, I know everybody that I've talked to is, they're, they're under the assumption now we got it down to fifteen-nine. That's all I got to say.
Yeah, and the bond issue that you're voting on is fifteen point nine.
Yeah, it's not what it, that's not totally what it says, Craig.
That's what it says.
No.
Okay, yeah. I marked my ballot, and I guess I read it wrong.
Marina Berlin, twenty-three thirty-three Lark Road, Abilene, in the south of town. Um, that's our main one here. Have any of you seen the courthouse in Concordia that this same architect built?
He didn't build the courthouse. He built the jail.
Jail.
Just a jail?
Yes.
Did you visit it?
I have.
I heard there was complaints, so I'm gonna try to check that out myself.
Well, and, and I'll recommend, you know, it wasn't the architect, it was the- Well, and I'll recommend, you know, it wasn't the architect, it was the contractor who went bankrupt during the construction of it, caused the delays.
Well, it's okay.
The architect actually built it out.
Yeah.
And their jail, their jail actually was purpose not just to hold county prisoners, but they bring in prisoners. And we really do not have a desire to do that here in Dixon County.
You mean to make money?
Right.
Right, bring in prisoners?
Yes, so bringing people in from Sedgwick or whatever. I mean, what happens is, you know, they don't send you the model prisoner. And there are times that in Dixon County that we will use the facility of one of the adjoining counties or vice versa, just to help each other out, you know, based on the number of prisoners you have. But, but that isn't our intent, is to have it be that we're going to try to help Sedgwick and Shawnee County and others and bring people in, where we want to keep it more of a, a local county.
And, and I don't want to interrupt Sheriff Lynn, but that's not our decision, that's the sheriff's department, what he wants to do. We have no control over who he brings in.
But the current sheriff...
Yes.
Is, I'm kind of mirroring my comments off of comments that he's made. So, as long as he's the sheriff...
He has no intention of bringing in.
Um, I, you know, that, that's what we're looking at right now.
On the Keystone, you know how long the, the distance is and like, what are you saying? A state might just confiscate the money and not let the county handle it, is that what you're saying?
Well, they were, they, they allowed them to be an abatement where they weren't taxed for ten years when they first put it in. And the state legislature granted that to them for some reason, and we were the only state to do that. So, all of the other states, when they pipeline went through that piece of property or a county, they collected money on it. Kansas was the only one that didn't.
So what is that, ten years is going to be up and now you might get it?
Um, was there an estimated value?
The ten years is up in twenty-twenty, so twenty-twenty was when we should start receiving that tax.
Prox, that, what I'm wondering is, how much is that?
And, and we had a meeting in Concordia, coincidentally, two months ago, with the director of the State Property Evaluation Division, PBD. And I asked that specific question as to, one, what's the chances that that will get screwed up, I guess if you will, for lack of a better term, by the legislature? And two, the amount? Because we had already asked some time ago what that amount is, and we monitored that closely since two thousand and ten and before when the exemption was, when they went on exemption. And they told us that, first of all, there's no state precedence for them ever getting two exemptions back to back. It's never happened in Kansas. As a matter of fact, it would violate the law, the law would have to be changed. So yes, it will be coming on the tax rolls then. A pipeline is, is taxed differently than real, real property. It's taxed based on the profit or the product that goes through it. And based on the million or half million barrels a day that go through the Keystone Pipeline across our county, that would equate to just over eight hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue to Dixon County alone. The Chapman School District will also see an amount significant similar to that to come into their, into their taxes as well.
Not, oh...
It's not part of our eight hundred thousand, they would have, theirs is actually estimated to be slightly more, so, because their mill levy's higher.
And so that money could be used for, to pay off the bond?
Well, it could go towards the, it, it could go to the budget of running the whole county. So, so you know, that's, puts you in a place where, you know, our, kind of my goal on it is that we just keep that mill levy, just keep it plateaued out.
And then, um, on the blueprints, the second floor plan has a big blank space. Is that trying to, because you're trying to keep that under budget, is that for future expansion or what?
That is probably above the courtrooms.
Is it open space?
Yes, it's open, it's kind of like...
It's mezzanine.
It has mezzanine.
Well, they have a higher ceiling, but above the jail is a higher ceiling.
Ceiling too.
Because they're two stories, so you have to have, the ceiling's designed higher so the DMAs can't get up to the ceiling.
It's, it's not really two stories, so to speak, but it's two levels.
Yeah.
There'll be level cells here and higher...
On the drawing, they say, the jail, they're going to stack cells, so you're actually are looking at two stories there. The rest of the part, the courtrooms would, would have a little higher ceiling, but the rest of the office space would just be, uh, just one story high. So, on the, it's a little confusing because you look and, and like you say, you see this blanket, well, there's no second floor here. The jail is the second story, but the rest of this, it, it doesn't exist.
Okay.
It doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Are there others that have questions or would want to make comment?
If you'd want to come in and sign in please, while you're out sitting in the hallway, appreciate having you sign in. And maybe my, if you want to stay for the rest of me, have a seat. Thank you.
If there are no other public comments, we'll move to the next portion of the meeting.
I'll just say thanks for putting up with this, that's all. Thanks for putting up with this.
Well, thank you, Ron.
And if you, if you build it on half of the high land up there new, I would support it.
You know, one of the things too, I noticed is, one of the articles in the paper the other day, and it, it referenced Gary County, you know, why don't we do things like Gary County or Marion County? And, and Marion County actually has a jail that they've just put up in the last, I don't know, four years, maybe three years? And, and then Gary County also has a jail that they have added on to and expanded. And so, you know, that is something where, and it's not like we're compelled that we have to try to keep up with Marion County or Gary County or Celine, but, you know, these discussions are taking place really at a lot of the counties and a lot of the counties, once you assess your, your situation, you know, you try to solve the problem, you might say, so. Well, thank you for coming.
Thanks again, guys.
I'd like to know what's wrong with the existing building across the street, if anyone's here now?
What's your name, Steve?
Raymond Creach, nine thirteen North Elm.
Yeah, Raymond, I think some of it is on the architect, um, from a security standpoint, having everything in one building and the accessibility. And so it, it was, you know, purposed as a different type of building and it's, it's cut up and, you know, storage and record keeping and so on, they have some issues.
There's that place, there's room in that building over there that they used for land banks for several years.
Yeah.
And you know, what, what do you, do you think Dixon County has grown that much for population? Abilene hasn't, hasn't grown its population for twenty-five, thirty years.
But the crime rate.
Huh?
Crime has gone up, though, that's the problem.
That doesn't mean that we have to build a new jail just for them.
If we're going to keep them secure, we have to.
You've got to keep them secure, yes, but you don't have to take, you need to convict them and get them out of here, put them in prison where they belong. You know, you, you guys are costing us more money by doing this crap than anything going on. We've got people that, that don't get, that get mistreated out, out in the public, that don't, that don't take, run by the, by this county. The, the nine-one-one system doesn't work. They don't take, they don't take and communicate with people like they're supposed to. You know, why, why can't, you know, you guys are going to run this place, why not run it, run it like it's supposed to be? You go to Dick, Clay County, uh, Cloud County, that's the highest priced county there is in the, in the state. Why, why, why are you guys, I, I think a lot of it is just plain ass dumb.
Well, you had to...
That's fact, Craig, I really do. Don't smile, I, it's right.
I've been called dumb before.
Yeah, Raymond, you've had your say, but, and you know, I mean, all in all...
I've reported things to you and you've never done a thing about it.
Oh, I...
No, you haven't done a thing about it.
You had a situation you told me about and, um, and I shared that information with administration and got an answer. And I thought I gave that back to you, but it was on, on tow trucks and, and there is a rotation system.
Well, they're, they're supposed to be, but there isn't, because they don't go by rotation.
So I did follow up on that. But, but that's another issue and...
That is another issue, but this, this here falls back to the same thing, it's spending money that we don't need to spend. And, and the plumbing problems that you had in here, I know the back when it, when that building was built, they had plumbing walls, that you had, had your plumbing down in walls, not, not just directly in the wall. They've disappeared then, because they're there now. Then, then they should, they should be put in there, when they take and put them back, when they put something back in there, that, that's, that's supposed to be a standard, that your plumbing is supposed to be in a wall where you can take and get in and do any, any maintenance to it that you can do. Well, that's not the way this goes.
One of the...
That's the way it should be done. What's wrong with the standards?
Yeah, one of, one of the issues and that, you do run into that with new buildings, is you have some of those standards in place and then you follow that. And also it, it increases sometimes your expenses of the building, but you have the ADA compliance. And there's a lot of issues that, you know, we need to address, and this is our opportunity to do it, so...
I'm just saying, they have to do this remodeling of the stuff, why aren't they putting it back like standard's supposed to be?
We'll, we'll be built to code.
If you get it built.
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
You know, truthfully, I, I doubt it, because I think that there's enough people that, that think that Dixon County does not need it. And we don't need to house prisoners from other counties and other places just because they don't have jails.
And we don't plan to.
Huh?
We don't plan to.
We don't plan to.
And that's just like, just like, just like the grade school sitting up here. That's sitting up there doing nothing, and this county has let it go to pot. And the city.
Left out the school district, that's their building.
But you, you guys are totally out of line.
Well, Raymond, thank you for, I, I mean, I know you've always been up front and told me what you thought, and I appreciate it.
You know, I want to fix that machine up too.
And we've lost your side, so...
And you know, I'll tell you what, I don't have money to take and throw out like this here that, that you guys want, want us to throw into it. You guys want, you think we, we can just take and just pull the money out of the back of our pocket and sell it to the, throw it to the county? Have you got, have you got extra mon, have you got an extra ten of fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, you just want to donate on this here, just to think and make it good? Would you want to take, put your salary in on it?
Wouldn't be that much.
I don't care, would you want to put your salary in? Maybe you guys all, all put your salary into this, then take, come back and find out how much you really need. Would that be a good idea?
Well, Raymond, you've put your, you've made your point, and, and the thing is, we need to move on to other items on the agenda. And, and I've let everybody here have their say, and so...
Saying, okay, you guys all lied to us.
Have a good one.
Okay.
We, we might, we might mention that.
We do videotape our meetings, so...
Okay. We've gone through public comments, so now we're to the portion for report of county officers. So Brad, would you want to give your report, please?
Sure, let's talk about an elevator. Uh, we, the elevator service people were here Monday. Of course, you're aware that it was out of service last week. They sent two technicians in Monday, they brought the module back, I'm calling it a module, it's a big chunk of thing, and put it back in. They traced from it and discovered that there was a sensor fed by a wire that determines when the door's open and closed and if there's anybody in the way, so the door can close or open, that was bad. It was not available, contrary to what everybody says, but they can retrofit a newer version into make it work. That's going to be thirty-eight hundred dollars. I signed the order, told them to get it done. So, they were able to put a, a Band-Aid on it if you will, to keep it going this week. They ordered parts, it's called an infrared curtain, uh, that essentially looks down at the entrance of the door and you tell if someone's in the door so it doesn't shut off. And, but at any rate, they were able to get it back up and running, uh, Monday afternoon, and it's been working this week. We haven't had anybody trapped on the elevators, so. And to my knowledge, we didn't have any issues where somebody needed to get up to port and couldn't, we were fortunate that they couldn't get there last week, so. Uh, we, we dodged a bullet and we did maintain it, as some people say we may not, and we've got nothing going, so. I did meet with Michael Hook, uh, yesterday from the Heritage Center, and he was, we'd met previously and I think I'd mentioned to you about the hundred and fifty celebration coming up here on a big day weekend. The county's going to be able to provide some assistance to them by way of, uh, some generators that we have and some lighting, lighting equipment, our mobile command post that they can operate out of, some for a command, uh, station. And then we'll also most probably provide some assistance with EMS and a medical station and, and things of that nature to, uh, help facilitate that event. I also had told him that we would waive the landfill fee for the trash dumpsters being dumped from that event down there when it's over with, so the Heritage Center wouldn't have to pay those fees, so. Great, we'll help them out, we're glad to do it. We do have the, uh, year-to-date budget reports from Janelle, and those are what climbed for this time of the year, nothing that I noted, the, the sales tax actually is, is up just slightly again, which is good news. We quote for the, the regular county sales tax and then the special highway sales tax, we went up about four thousand, around four thousand dollars from the previous month on both of those, so. We're at six hundred and, almost six hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars from year-to-date for the special sales tax. And we had projected, uh, one point one million, so we should be in line to see that happen pretty real close, so. If you have any questions on that, I would try to answer that. Martin had a breakdown with the, uh, the roller, steel roller. Uh, the roller we've got's forty years old, it's got a cylinder that's gone out, they're trying to get parts for it. In the meantime, we've had to lease one from Berry Tractor for a week or so to finish the overlay project, that'll run about eighteen hundred dollars for a week, so. Bobcat renewal, our lease is, is due again here in the next month from Bobcat for the annual, uh, skid steer contract that we get, so we'll be renewing that. Just an update on the road and bridge, they have completed chip ceiling with the, uh, our roads, and then they also did Westford Street, Grant Township, to help Grant Township out. Grant Township, of course, will pay for those costs. Uh, they did a couple streets in Solomon as well, same situation, they'll pay for those expenses. And now they're back to doing some overlay to finish it out. They're doing thirty-four-hundred Avenue from Camp Road across the fair with a skim coat, and then we will help the city of Abilene out by doing, uh, Washington Street from the River Track south of Ennis Square. Once they get that done here next week, then they'll be done with, with overlay and chip seal for the year. They can get back to the bridges that we've got to replace and, and back to mowing and, we've been mowing all along. And now that we've got some rain, it's growing faster than we can keep up with as usual, but that's basically what they're doing. And as you heard from John Goff in the, in the department head meeting this morning, we've got four fish passage bridges to do, uh, that have been approved from the federal government, from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, uh, that will get started on here right away after we get, get done with roofs like that, so. That's all I've got.
Okay. Doug?
I brought with me a resolution for the, um, allowing me to proceed with the judicial foreclosure for the sale of real estate, the past few real estate taxes and assessments. And so I'd like to pass that up to the, to the board, and if you approve that, then I will proceed to file on those that are past due, real estate and assessments. And it's just a one-page sheet that you just have to approve, authorizing me to move forward with foreclosures on those properties.
Okay.
The properties are attached, there's twenty-seven parcels of real estate that would be affected by this. Hopefully that gets reduced by at least half, hopefully it gets reduced by all, but realistically, if it gets reduced below twenty, that would be a reasonable expectation.
So really it's kind of a housekeeping thing, just to move the process forward and...
That's what it is. Previously, each year you authorized me to move forward to enforce the past due, the collection of past due taxes. And so this is the document that I need to file with the court, that I have the authorization from the board, county commissioners to proceed with the foreclosure.
I'll just give a minute for Laverne to take a look at it and then Craig, if you wanna take a look at it, just the list of the names on the properties. Now, if, if they come in and choose to try to pay the tax, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
If they choose to come in and try to take, clean this up before it comes for auction, they can do that or...
Uh, well, two, two parts to that answer. The first one is if they, uh, if they come in and pay before we have the court issue an order for the sale of the property, then they would pay the taxes and interest and penalty. If they wait until after the court approves the order of judgment, then they would have an additional fee added to it because the county would have an additional fee for publications and those costs.
Okay.
And so they, and yes, they can do it up until 4 o'clock the day before the sale of the property. After that property is sold, they cannot, there is no redemption period for them.
Okay. The resolution number on that is 081017. So I'll go ahead and move that we adopt that resolution.
I'll second that.
We have the motion and the second to adopt that resolution, which is for foreclosure and sale of real estate property and interest in real estate located Dixon County, whereupon the taxes and special assessments levied against each tract of real estate remain due and unpaid. Any questions or further discussion?
These are all three years past you?
Yes, three years or more.
Three years or more, okay.
There's some that were on there, you may recall, last year, Laverne, when you were at the sale, that there was some properties got no bids.
No bids.
And so those come back up year after year until usually the specials fall off of it and then somebody will buy them.
Okay, go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we'll need to go ahead and sign this paper, thank you, Doug. It's all of our signatures, looks like we passed it too much.
Yeah.
Maybe, yeah. Okay, we do not have any other unfinished business. On other business, we had two items to add to the agenda and, um, Craig had mentioned that he would like to have the executive session before we talk about the CAB agreement and, um...
Before we take a vote on it.
Before we take a vote on it. And so at this time, we'll go ahead and, um, just in case Gal doesn't wanna stay around, briefly, do you wanna mention what the CAB agreement is, just generally speaking and then...
Well, it's the Regional Advisory Board Agreement in between the four counties that make up the judicial district in, in, uh, which is us, for us, Marion and, and Gary County, uh, to provide, uh, the oversight for the, uh, Community Corrections Program. Is that correct, Doug?
Yes.
So, and if you wanna stay around, Gal, to see how we vote on it, but we'd probably adopt it in some form or other.
Do you expect anything different than, than normal?
Um, we could, I could have Brad, it'd call you if, if that occurs, so, I wouldn't anticipate it, but you know, can't really say. Okay, at this time, um, I'd go ahead and make the motion that we enter the executive session at 12:15. This will be for attorney-client privilege and include our attorney and administrator and the three commissioners.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we need a motion to return to regular session.
So moved.
I'll second it. Got the motion and the second to return to regular session from executive session. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we just, we're briefed on some of the details of the agreements, the attorney-client privilege. We do have a written agreement before us, are there any questions on that or a motion to adopt?
Um, I move we adopt the revised, the judicial district, community corrections and local agreement.
I'll second it. Okay, we have the motion and the second to adopt this new agreement for community, uh, for the corrections group, CAB, and, um, any further discussion?
You might have, or I guess either I, Brad, can what brought us to, to this point to change it or not.
Well, there was some issues that dealt with the management of funds and the audit in Gary County, who's our agency, and the first notification that you got was from the state of Kansas that the financial reports have not been submitted and one thing led to another and it was determined by the four counties involved, the agreement needed to be updated.
That's correct.
Okay, and this will give a little more oversight to that situation.
That's correct.
Give anything to add to it, Doug, or...
No, no.
Okay. And, and there's been discussions, not only with Dixon County, but the other counties involved and so, so this was, um, just kind of a process to go ahead and firm everything up and, um, so any further questions or discussion? We've got the motion and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I'd move we adjourn.
Second.
Got the motion and the second for adjournment, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Are you the only one?